Unfortunately, and I wish we had a lot of others like you, but that is not the case because what I would like to say is that anyone that has an unaltered animal is a part of this problem and we cannot point fingers at any one group. We can't possibly get to these numbers without it being a massive problem. This is a crisis in our state and it does need to be addressed. Thank you.
And Mr. Kelsman.
Yes.
The legislation also allows each jurisdiction, Los Angeles included of course, to tailor make their licensing program to be more stringent if that is what you're advocating. And we would certainly support you in that effort.
Well, I certainly think you should make it more stringent. You should be more aggressive about it if only 10 or 20 percent of the dog owners have them registered. That's your job is to get the rest of them registered and believe me, you can find them and that should be a revenue stream that you should accept. Is there any place in the nation or the world that has these laws that make it automatic at four months, you must do this to your animals? Anybody doing that on the planet?
Yes, can I speak to you about Santa Cruz County? In the year 1995, Santa Cruz adopted spay and neuter. And I've also been working with everyone in Santa Cruz and they'd be happy to bring you into their shelters in Santa Cruz and open up their books and statistics to you. And in a 10-year period, after they implemented spay and neuter, the decrease of the dogs' animals total intake was 64 percent. And about 95 percent of those animals now coming into the shelters in Santa Cruz are spayed and neutered. This is a homegrown model in our state and something to be proud of. And the people of Santa Cruz would invite you in.
Ed, tell us about the dogs you take in every year. Do they come from owners who just want to put them down? Where do they come from, the mixture of them that you put down?
The majority of the animals we take in are called strays, but I prefer to call them lost. These are animals that have somehow, for some reason typically have gotten away from their owners. They're intact, they're in need of spay and neuter, they've been driven by this hormonal instinctual drive to leave home and they end up in our shelters. And because of our admittedly somewhat anemic licensing program, they don't have identification. 100 percent of the animals that come into our shelter with licenses go home. But unfortunately, 90 percent of the animals that come into our shelter don't have identification and never go home again, although Los Angeles can boast a return-to-owner rate that's four times higher than any other major city in the country. So we are doing something right with respect to returning lost animals. Somewhere in the neighborhood, about 4,000 to 5,000 lost animals are reunited with their animals because of our licensing and microchip programs.
Our last question is, how does the law work if it goes into effect? How would it impact people watching?
As I mentioned earlier, the law was primarily designed by Animal Control to be as cost neutral as possible. We're a complaint-driven organization. People call up and say, "The dog next door is running loose again." "The dog next door attacked the mailman." "The dog next door..." Whatever the complaint is, we go out, we make sure that the animal is licensed. If it's not, we give people information on licensing. But the problem, the driver of these types of problems is the fact that the animals are intact. So we can encourage them to get spayed and neutered and we can give them vouchers to get their animals spayed and neutered. And some people follow up and are very thankful for our programs. But many people don't. And what this legislation will allow us to do is solve the problem, that first attack, that first bite, as opposed to having to go out the second time and the third time and having dog hearings and vicious dog hearing. All of that escalates. And what this tool will do is it will allow us to solve many, many of our problems the first time we're out there.
Can I address also, you asked exactly how it would work. First of all, the, one of the other sponsors, Ed has mentioned that this has been written by Animal Control, which it has, which is California Animal Control Directors Association and the State Humane Association of California. But also, the third very proud sponsor we have is CVMA, the California Veterinary Medical Association. And the law states that at four months, all cats and dogs should be spayed and neutered. Cats can go into heat and get pregnant at five months, dogs can at six. Now, if an animal is at any time ill, let's say the puppy or kitten is a little under weight, it might have a respiratory problem, the vet has the ability to say, "I'm not ready to spay or neuter this animal." And that then gets extended. We actually give 75 days after the four months so that the animal is at six and a half months so that the veterinarian is very comfortable with the state of the animal and that it is prepared for surgery. Now, also, at any time, if the animal, let's say is a 14-year-old cat with renal failure, that animal cannot undergo anesthesia, that animal would be exempt. If you get a ticket, if in fact you are one of these people that are found without your animal, unaltered, you get 30 days to fix it, literally fix it. And at that time, Animal Control can then waive the fee. We made that fee $500. And the reason why we made that fee $500 is because we want compliance. If it only costs you $20 or $30 to get your animal spayed or neutered, even if it costs you $200 to get your animal spayed or neutered, it's better than paying $500. And the other thing is, one of the misconceptions about the bill has been, well, people just give up their animals. Well, that doesn't do them any good because the ticket stays with the human, not the animal. So even if they give up that animal, they still owe the $500. So what would be the right thing to do is get dog or kitty spayed and neutered and save yourself the money and you don't have to deal with anybody ever again.
And if I could speak to that enforcement issue as well, Judy had mentioned that there is a 30-day provision to get the animal spayed or neutered, but there is also the provision that allows Animal Control officers to give people extended periods of time. Our primary interest, like yours, is the health and welfare of the animals in the community. And we, we're not out to punish people, we're out there to help people. And this is a piece of legislation, especially coupled with our voucher program, that gives us the tools to help people in need get the service for their animals that they need.
Somebody handed me this just now about places, experiences where mandatory spay-and-neuter laws haven't worked. And they mentioned Fort Worth, Texas, Montgomery County, Maryland, Kings County, West Virginia, Camden, New Jersey, Aurora, Colorado. And they basically say that people just didn't register their animals anymore. There was less registration than we had before. Is there any truth to this stuff here?
And Mr. Rosenthal, you can push a button again after this question is answered.
Sir, I have read a lot of these stories and seen the articles that say that it doesn't work. Oftentimes, it's a matter of statistical analysis, it didn't work. One, because they never enacted the ordinance in the first place. King County, Washington is often cited as a failure. Well, King County held hearings very similar to these and whenever it was, five or six years ago, the city council voted it down. So of course it didn't work because it never was passed. So you have to read into some of these analyses to get a true comprehension of what the story was and how aggressive Animal Control was permitted to enforce the spay and neuter laws. And I agree 100. You won't find anybody probably in this room that doubts that from a enforcement perspective that we don't do enough in convincing the dog-owning population to vaccinate for rabies and license their animals. And we should be doing more.
Okay, well, I'll push my button again next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson followed by Mr. Cardenas, excuse me, I think Mr. Cardenas is going to close. Mr. Wesson, Mr. Alakon, and then Mr. Garcetti followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I was looking for President Garcetti, but I will say that I will with caution, with caution, support his amendment. But we have to realize for at least those of us that have been in the state senate or the assembly, we as a council need to be careful that we don't handcuff the representative because at the end of the day, Mr. Levine is going to be the one that tries to form or try to negotiate. So we don't want, we need to have, be cautious. We need to have caution where it relates to limiting his ability. So I'd like to ask Ed a couple of quick questions. So if you could hold my time after the questions. How much does it cost the city of LA to shelter and kill the number of dogs that we do every year? Hold my time.
Our current budget is about $25 million. It has recently been increased by 23 percent this year just to handle the load. And over the last five years, it's had to be increased by 36 percent.
So what's the total again? What was the total we spent to shelter and to kill?
About $20 million.
About $20 million.
So $20 million a year. In the event that this were to be passed, do you anticipate that it would be a reduction in that 20 million? Hold my time.
Over time, yes. There are other states have conducted studies on the amount of money invested in spay and neuter programs and they have found a dramatic decrease in animal control costs over a 10-year period.
So now with those savings, could you beef up your enforcement and could that, would that money be flexible for you to do other things?
That is the intention. That is our plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now let me ask you this. What is the percentage of the dogs that are sick or dangerous dogs that are in our shelter that we kill? Or no, what's the percentage of healthy dogs that could still lead a good life if they had a home? What percentage of the dogs would be considered good dogs? Dogs and cats?
Off the cuff, and because that's a very difficult subject of judgment, I would say in the neighborhood of 50 percent or so.
Okay, so probably half of the dogs are okay. Is that?
Yes.
You know, there's merit on both sides of the argument and I guess depending on how you spin it, you could be right. I have right now two dogs. Tiffany, my little girl, I got her fixed and no problem. Peabody, my number one son, we got him fixed and I still couldn't keep him in the house. I mean, so things happen. But, so, but the point I want to make is just an emotional point. You all know that I do the best I can to help Ed sell as many dogs as we have. But I had a dog, similar to you, Bill. His name was Banditamo. 15 years, I got him about a couple of months before my son was born. He lived for 15 years. At the end, he was really sick and he couldn't move and the most difficult thing that I had to do was to put him down. And I felt because he was family that I had to be there with him when it occurred. And at the last second, the cloudy eyes that he had became clear. And he looked me in my face as I looked at him and we said goodbye to each other. So it pains me to think of 50 percent of the dogs that we will, and cats, we will call them good companion animals, that may have maybe two years old, one year old, six years old, and so many years left on their life. It pains me to think about when they get that shot and towards the end, their eyes are going to be clear when they could have another 10 years of life. So what I suggest is the important thing about this issue is that the city of LA should send a message to Sacramento to keep the debate alive. Because that's what we're doing now. I have nothing at all against the breeders or the people who are opposed to this bill. They make good sense on some of their areas. They have merit in their concerns. But if we keep the debate alive and if we give the assembly member the opportunity and the wiggle room to try to come up with an arrangement that both sides can live with, I think that that's important to us. Because if we're talking about 400,000 dogs killed, killed, I have concerns about that. And I think that the worst thing that we could do is to do nothing. The best thing that we could do is to keep the debate alive. So I would ask for an I vote and I would suggest that through the mayor's office and you, Ed, that we track this legislation, that we are engaged in the discussions where it relates to amendments, that Mr. Garcetti, we carefully word the suggestion or amendment that you had. And let's see at the end of the day if we can make this happen. And for those that think that this died in committee, it didn't die.
No, absolutely.
It took public testimony.
Right. And it's going to be voted on on the 24th?
Again, so I think...
23rd, 24th.
So anyway, I asked for an I vote and I think this has been an excellent debate. But let's think about, I mean, I come here every other Friday with a dog or a cat and everybody runs up, "Oh, little baby, dah 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 dah." Those are the dogs we're killing. That's, I mean, it's killing. Those are the dogs and the cats that we're killing. You need to think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Alakon followed by Mr. Garcetti.
First of all, I'm happy to support the legislation, but I do want to say that I'm fearful that we are not in a position to respond effectively to the legislation once passed. So I think we have a lot more work to do before we will be able to implement this program effectively. I also don't understand why we need Sacramento to do this for us. Why can't we just do this in the city of Los Angeles? Is there anything, is there anything in the, is there anything in state law that prohibits us from doing exactly what is in the legislation?
Absolutely not. In fact, I was wondering this morning if there isn't any reason why the city council couldn't vote on it for the city of Los Angeles today.
Well, I would, I would, I think, I think there would be some emotion that would have to be introduced. However, let me say that I would be supportive of creating a program such as this immediately in the city of Los Angeles without having to wait for Sacramento. However, I think that we need your most dedicated attention to providing with us a management program that would more effectively be able to do this than rely on Sacramento.
Absolutely.
To observe the local condition that we have.
And if I could speak to the reason...
Just let me mention a couple of things that I believe are essential. We need to expand our program for poor and working poor folks to be able to get their animals spayed and neutered. And we need your guidance on how to best do that. The fine program, I was very impressed with the fact that you are cited, however, if you get the dog spayed or the dog or cat spayed and neutered, you can avoid that $500 cost and can get it more reasonably and perhaps even use a voucher at the shelter. We do have to expand the dollars available for spay and neuter in the shelter. I also agree that we have to double and redouble our efforts to enforce the requirements to register your animals. And it's not just dogs and cats, it's just about every animal I can think of. But we would need to see that, I think, in the report that would come forward. But I would be happy to support with my colleagues, an effort to create this legislation internally and not have to rely on Sacramento.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And just to address the amendment that was put forward, you're looking at earlier language, the most recent copy which I looked at in the interim does include, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, both the, it's not May, but that a local animal control agency shall establish a free and low-cost spay and neuter program for low-income individuals and that the agency shall undertake outreach efforts to inform qualified persons about these programs. So that amendment's been added. So I withdraw the previous request that that be put in, but that allows that to be in One thing though that I think I heard you say that I just want to talk about, it's germane to the subject, but you say that you've taken out the canvassing program out of the budget? Did I hear you correctly?
Council members, Linda Barth, the Assistant General Manager of Animal Services. The canvassing program is actually unfunded in our department and has been for quite a number of years. At one time it was funded, then there was a contractor that did the work. Currently, however, as the general manager mentioned, what we've done is taken salary savings to develop sort of an ad hoc group using some vocational workers and part-time employees. It's not a full complement of canvassers, there's no supervisor for the effort, there's somebody who sort of shares his attention. So there's some deployment of a canvassing group, but it's not as fully mobilized as if we could get the 10 full-time positions that we'd like to have in order to actually get them working full-time and working on more of a program aspect. So it's really just sort of a part-time effort, but it has yielded some results, about an additional 5,000 or 10,000 licenses a month, for example, in addition to the regular that's coming in. So it's helping, but it's a small startup effort with salary savings.
I'm a little troubled by that. I think members of the press corps will remember when we had a press conference, I think it was about two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, where we announced the canvassing effort. It was something that the Budget and Finance Committee and this council, two different administrations of mayors very much supported. We looked at Los Angeles County's efforts and how successful that canvassing program. And a lot of the animal advocates said, "This is really the core to, especially in the lower-income areas, this working." And I appreciate that departments right now are in a number of different financial squeezes. But for that to have only come out here in this context, that there had been a great reduction of that or that it's only being done on an ad hoc basis is troubling to me. That has to be, we are here as your friends and your allies, but we need the relationship too, where if there's been a mandate from this council, it continues. And if it's not going to, that you come to us and you tell us that there is something that is not moving forward and that we don't just hear about it in an ad hoc way here. Because that is critical for our communities, that door-to-door programming and the way that that then touches every angelino in the way the county has done efficiently is key to the educational efforts that everybody in this room has been talking about. And if we need to fix that budget hole, we will, but we need to make sure where have, what are you using that money instead for? Not that it actually was ever said specifically that it would be there, but we had a commitment, maybe through a change of leadership, but nevertheless, a commitment to the people of Los Angeles for doing that program. And just because we have different council members who come on board, different leadership in a department, we can't break that word to the folks out there in Los Angeles. So I say that as a side note because I was a little troubled to hear that. And I think that we need not only an ad hoc one, we need a systematic canvassing program. And when it was first pitched to us, it was something that would kind of pay for itself over time because if you have effective workers, they're paying for their own position. So to say that it wasn't cost-effective too also raises a question. So I'd like to put that before we do our budget process on your agenda as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Herb Wesson is the most brilliant one I've met around the horseshoe. He's given me a way out that I can be comfortable with, but I'm in the midst of an issue. What does this do to my dog Lulu who is not altered?
Well, as I explained in our conversation the other day, council member, you really are the poster boy for this piece of legislation. You are a responsible breeder, you would be exempted.
And that's because I spent the $100 versus the 10.
Exactly.
So it doesn't change for me at all?
Not at all.
Okay. Well, colleagues, as a dog lover and an animal lover of all kinds of animals, I really believe in the sacredness of their nature, but I also understand the terrible situation we have. I had to put my dog Rosie down. She was over 11, almost 12, and I was right there holding her as she went down. And it's a terrible thing if you love your animals to see that kind of abuse. And it's also a terrible thing to see how people abuse their animals, they have them running loose, they're not registering their animals and they're not treating them properly. Those people should be aggressively pursued by your depart... And it is with heavy heart that I will support this legislation for the common good of everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
This is, this has been an excellent dialogue. It's been an excellent opportunity for people to learn and grow on this issue. And it's also been an excellent opportunity for people to understand that there's much more dialogue that needs to take place. Again, this is a resolution, this is not city legislation. It's been talked about that possibly one of us council members may come up with legislation to just do exactly this, probably fine-tune it a little bit more to tailor to our city, but that opportunity may come very soon. But what I wanted to point out is that this legislation is very simple. It basically is assisting us as human beings and making sure that as a society, we take the responsibility that we should take in making sure that animals, that if we left them out in the wild, we wouldn't be having this discussion. We're not talking about spaying neutering mountain lions or bears or what have you. We're talking about dogs and cats. We as human beings made them our domestic animals. Now we have the responsibility of making sure that we do not allow them to continue or to fall into cruel situations. For example, I think it's cruel upon the animals that were abandoned the other day that these two rottweilers attacked a woman who was jogging. It's cruel to the animals that they be in that situation because the human beings abandoned them. And the fact of the matter is, when animals are abandoned, domestic animals are abandoned, they are more likely to fight with each other amongst themselves and they are more likely to attack a human being. We caused that problem. The animals didn't. They at one time were owned by human beings. Just the fact that the rottweilers means that rottweilers didn't just pop up on earth, they were bred into being rottweilers by human beings, yet at the same time, we abandoned them. Just want to give that as an example of what we're trying to solve here. And it's very emotional. But the problem is, we must solve it. And that's the reason why I'm encouraging my colleagues on the city council of Los Angeles to support this imperfect legislation. Because legislation is never perfect, never. Even Herb Wesson knows and he had some great legislation, just not perfect. I look forward to the day, and I think this is going to contribute to the day, that this complements the fact that we have an animal cruelty task force now, the fact that we will continue to canvass our communities and educate people, all these things. This is a perfect complement to be in a responsible society, a responsible city, and hopefully a responsible state. I look forward to the day that Herb Wesson walks up to that microphone as lonely as can be and doesn't have a dog or a cat to ask to be adopted. And Herb, I promise you, if we see that in our lifetime, and I dream and pray that we see that in our lifetime, I will give you a hug.
We're looking toward that.
And we should commemorate that day. We should commemorate that that day will come. But it's not going to come without this legislation. And it's not going to come without other legislation. It's not going to come without infusing more and more dollars responsibly in the right places on the front end. And spay and neuter requirements is a front-end issue. That is something that is not complicated. We need to support this legislation. Please, let's support this legislation, hopefully unanimously. Let's send a message so that the dialogue is strong in Sacramento and they get a better piece of legislation by the time it gets signed by the governor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Are there, Andy, are we going with the report that came from committee?
Yes, Madam President, the amendment was withdrawn.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
That item's been approved. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number eight and that was called special by Council Member Garcetti.
Thank you. Yes, item number eight, we will go. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And along with the chair of our Housing, Community and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, simply wanted to call number eight special.
Mr. Garcetti, maybe, sorry. If we could have everyone in the room, we're continuing with our business. If you could just take your conversations outside, if that's going to please.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, we called special simply because it's something to be proud of here in Los Angeles. I know folks have heard about this, but this builds on an award that our housing department got. It's considered the Academy Awards of government, of government funding, sorry, government programs, that each year the Kennedy School of Government picks the very best examples of government innovation throughout the country and gives them an Innovations in Government Award. Here in Los Angeles, our systematic code enforcement program, or SKEP, received that award. And this today allows us to take this model through a grant and share it throughout the country. In districts like Mr. Reyes's and my own, Ms. Perry's, others where there's old housing stock, the SKEP program is critical in keeping people living in non-slum conditions. But it's also a great investment program. It's literally brought about $4 billion of investment because when property owners have to comply and make sure that they aren't keeping their tenants in substandard conditions, they invest and that creates... they invest, and that creates jobs and better housing for everybody. So I just wanted to congratulate the housing department. Before, when I was chair, we worked closely on the expansion of SKEP to make sure it would go every three years here in the city, and we were very proud of the award when it was given a couple of years ago. This now allows Los Angeles to take our model and help other cities and other tenants and landlords across the country get into compliance, help make sure that the quality of their housing stock is as good as it can be. So it's a great day for Los Angeles, and I just wanted to congratulate the housing department. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We add all of us our congratulations for their effectiveness on this program. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Item number 15 was called special by Council Member Cardenas, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council.
Tony. Tony.
Mr. Cardenas.
Your item, 15. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I called this item special for the technical amendments, and they've been handed out to all the council members, so they are on everyone's desk. And again, they're just technical amendments, so the substance of the item is still the same. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. That item with the amending motion is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 ayes. That item's been approved. Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Item number four was being held on the desk, and I believe there is a request to continue that item.
Continue for a week? Okay.
And that would be April 24th.
Okay.
Continue till tomorrow.
We're going to change that and continue it actually till tomorrow, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions will be posted and referred.
Excuses on the desk. Council Member Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, May 9th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Will be excused.
And also, he requests to be excused Tuesday, April 17th to leave early, and June 26th and 27th, those are for city business, and they meet council policy.
They'll be excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, April 24th to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to say it was a wonderful event on Sunday evening at Los Angeles Dodger Stadium where they honored the great legacy of the 60th anniversary of Jackie Robinson, and the beautiful presentation that Ed Reyes had in council here was shown on the television, which was so nice, and it was a wonderful evening for all to enjoy. I wanted to remember that great event that kicked off here in our council chambers under the leadership of Mr. Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to announce that I was in Sacramento yesterday, and the Transportation Committee 13 to 0 approved the Green Line authority going forward into LAX. It was a great day for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have adjourning motions? I know I have one, yes. We could ask everyone to please rise. Colleagues, I know that we all join today. Could have quietened everyone. Maybe close the door back there. Thank you. Join today in adjournment. Yesterday marked the commemoration of one of the greatest tragedies of the last 100 years, the Holocaust, that killed over 6 million people in Europe. And it's with great sadness that that horrible event is matched with the worst school shooting in U.S. history. 33 students, and I think today it was 34 students who passed, this morning I heard on the radio, and faculty at the Virginia Tech University when an individual opened fire in the dormitory and classroom. The loss of these families, to these families and children is really quite profound. These young men and women were just beginning their adult lives. As our campuses are home to so many of our children, we understand the importance of this activity that occurred, this tragedy that occurred. So I'd like us all to join in memory of those that perished yesterday and to adjourn and honor those that have survived and are now faced really with the challenge in the wake of such a horrendous tragedy. Definitely all members. Ms. Labange. Ms. Rosendahl.
Dan Vanizuela and his wife Nancy Vanizuela both passed away within the last three weeks. Dan was a Venice resident, as was his wife, and a member of St. Mark's Church. In fact, I saw him there as we were doing a eulogy for Chuck Snow from Lincoln Place. He was a recipient of the Spirit of Venice Award. You could find Dan riding his bike most mornings, going to the beach to say hi to folks. He was a major activist with the Chamber of Commerce and also with St. Mark's Church. May he and his wife rest in peace.
Ms. Rosendahl, any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.